All right, good evening. I'd like to welcome Greg Foster to lead us in our invocation. Also want to add that Greg gave me some jalapeno peppers from his garden. I ate some the other day and they're pretty hot.
I'm glad you eat them because I don't. We just grow them and give them away. Let's pray. Father, we love you and we thank you so much for this time. We thank you, Lord, for your bounty. Thank you, Lord, for your favor. I'm glad that we know that you are in control of everything that touches our life. Pray your blessings upon this house, upon this place, upon this city, upon the gathering of these men and women, Lord, that will sit tonight and make decisions that will affect their neighborhoods, their friends, and their families. Pray that you just continue to use them, guide them, and direct all that they do, that you grant them knowledge and wisdom and understanding to know, God, the best, the best that they need to know to be able to operate to the fullest of that that you have compelled them to do. Continue to bind us together with cords that can't be broken. Continue to lead, God, and direct our steps and our thoughts. Lord, let us continue to walk under your blessings and continue to walk in your favor, we ask in Christ's name. Amen.
Good evening, everybody. I'd like to call the regular meeting in Milton City Council for Monday, May 3, 2010, to order. Will the city clerk please call the roll and make general announcements?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'll be happy to call roll for the May 3, 2010, regular meeting. However, I would like to remind those in attendance to please silence all cell phones at this time. Additionally, those attending the meeting who would like to provide public comment either during the public hearing or during the call for public comment, you are required to complete a public comment card prior to speaking on an item. There is no public comment for consent agenda or items under first presentation. Those called to speak will be taken in the order that the speaker cards were received by the city clerk staff prior to the beginning of tonight's meeting. All speakers will identify themselves by name, address, and organization if applicable. When you hear the bell, you have 30 seconds to complete your remarks. The city council may allow public comment on either an agenda item or general public comment from a representative of such organized group or association provided, however, that such an individual shall file a notarized affidavit that they have the authority to speak on behalf of said organization on a form provided by the city clerk prior to the agenda item being called. Demonstration of any sort within the chamber is prohibited, so please refrain from any applause, cheering, booing, outbursts, or dialogue with any person speaking. Please show the same respect to the person speaking that you will expect to receive yourself. Anyone in violation will be asked to leave. As I call roll, please confirm your attendance. Mayor Joe Lockwood?
Here.
Councilmember Karen Thurman?
Here.
Councilmember Julie Zoner Bailey?
Here.
Councilmember Bill Luss?
Here.
Councilmember Bert Hewitt?
Here.
Councilmember Joe Longoria?
Here.
Councilmember Alan Tartt?
Here.
Would everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
And so I'd like to ask the citizens of American Revolution to lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, just want to welcome everybody here tonight to our council meeting. Will the city clerk please sound the next item?
Next item is approval of meeting agenda. Agenda item number 10, 1120.
Okay, is there any items that we need to consider?
Mayor, I've got a couple. Some of the considerations, and we have two tonight that I'd like to add, and I'd like to add with the explanation that both are very time-sensitive. One deals with advertising and being able to get an ad in the paper before Memorial Day, so they have their opportunity to do it. And therefore, I'd like to add the approval of an advertising agreement between the City of Milton and Apen Newspapers Incorporated for Memorial Day event ads on the consent agenda. I'd also like to add, under new business, a contract that deals with paving so that we can receive some LARP funding and a certain work we have to do by a deadline. So, under new business, I'd like to add an approval of a contract between the City of Milton and Allied Paving and Contractors in the amount of $183,625 for a citywide asphalt patching project. Further, may I just want to note tonight, added executive session to discuss land acquisition.
Do I have a motion in a second?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the meeting agenda as represented by staff.
Second. I have a motion by Councilmember Tartt, second by Councilmember Longoria. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Okay, next item is public comment. Public comment is a time for citizens to share information with the mayor and city council and to provide input and opinions on any matter that is not scheduled for its own public hearing during today's meeting. There's no discussion on items on the consent agenda or first presentation from the public and/or from council. Each citizen who chooses to participate in public comment must complete a comment card and submit it to the city clerk. Please remember, this is not a time to engage the mayor or members of the city council in conversation. When your name is called, please step forward and speak into the microphone stating your name and address for the record. You'll have five minutes for remarks. Do we have any general public comments?
Sir, we have four public comments on the sewer issue.
And I believe we should hear those at that point. Is that, would that be correct?
We're going to have a public, we're going to have a public comment before that agenda item.
Yeah, okay. But that's all right with us.
First speaker would be Kurt Nolte.
Again, I think we'll, we're going to wait. We'll wait till we get to that agenda item rather than just general public comment. Okay, moving on to the consent agenda, will the city clerk please sound the items?
First item is approval of the April 12, 2010, regular council meeting minutes. Agenda item number 10, 1121. Our second item is approval of April 19, 2010, special call meeting minutes. Agenda item number 10, 1122. Third item is approval of April 19, 2010, work session minutes. Agenda item number 10, 1123. Our fourth item is approval of a service agreement between City of Milton and Optech Monet LLC for the repair of a sinkhole within Crooked Creek subdivision. Agenda item number 10, 1124. Our fifth item is approval for the amendment of the automatic aid agreement between the Milton Fire Department and Alpharetta Fire and Emergency Services. Agenda item number 10, 1125. Our sixth item is approval of minor subdivision flats and revisions. Agenda item number 10, 1126. And added by motion and vote is the following item: approval of an advertising agreement between the City of Milton and Apen Newspapers, Inc. for Memorial Day event ads.
Okay, do I have a motion in a second?
Mayor, I move to approve the consent agenda as read.
Second. I have a motion by Councilmember Luss, second by Councilmember Tartt. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. And we're going to move on to reports and presentations. The city clerk, please sound the first item.
Next item is a proclamation recognizing Peace Officers Memorial Day presented by Councilmember Bill Luss.
Members of the Milton Police.
Proclamation for Peace Officers Memorial Day. It's only fitting that we do something like that to their city. Whereas the Congress and President of the United States have designated May 15 as Peace Officers Memorial Day, in the week in which May 15 falls as National Police Week. And whereas, members of law enforcement agency of the City of Milton play an essential role in safeguarding rights and freedoms of the City of Milton. And whereas, it is important that all citizens know and understand the duties, responsibilities, hazards, and sacrifices of the law enforcement agency, that members of our law enforcement agency recognize their duty to serve the people by safeguarding life and property, by protecting them against violence and disorder, and by protecting the innocent against deception and weak, against oppression. And whereas, the men and women of the law enforcement agency of the City of Milton unseasonably provide a vital public service. Now therefore, by Mayor of the City of Milton, I call upon all citizens of the City of Milton, upon all patriotic civic and educational organizations, to observe the week of May 9, 2010, as Police Week, and appropriate ceremonies and observances in which all of our people may join in commemorating law enforcement officers, past and present, who, by their faithful and loyal devotion to their responsibilities, have rendered a dedicated service to their communities, and in so doing, have established for themselves an enviable and enduring reputation for preserving the rights and security of all citizens. Further, I call upon all citizens of the City of Milton to observe May 15 as Peace Officers Memorial Day in honor of those law enforcement officers who through their courageous deeds have made the ultimate sacrifice in service to their community, or who have become disabled in the performance of duty. And let us recognize and pay respect to the survivors that all are fallen dead. In witness, therefore, he has here to set his hand and seal caused by the seal of the City of Milton to be affixed, even under his hand and seal, the City of Milton, Georgia, on this third day of May, 2010. Mayor Joe Lockwood.
Can't you take like three pictures and Photoshop them together?
You're right up here. Work it out, okay? You're tall, you're tall, you're tall. See your legs reach up. You're a little big now. How's that, that work? What do you have?
Okay, moving on to the first presentation and public hearing, will the city clerk please sound the item?
Item is approval of an ordinance to adopt amendments to the fiscal 2010 budget for each fund of the City of Milton, Georgia, amending the amount shown in each budget as expenditures, amending the several items of revenue anticipations, prohibiting expenditures to exceed appropriations, and prohibiting expenditures to exceed actual funding available. Agenda item number 10, 1127.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is the first of two public hearings that we're going, that we are required to hold for the budget amendment. There will be a work session on Monday, May 10 to discuss the amendments in detail, and a second public hearing will be held on Monday, May 17, also with the adoption of the ordinance. To summarize the requested, to summarize, the request of revenue and expenditure appropriation amendments in the general fund will increase by roughly 6.8 million. The reason for these budget amendments is twofold. First, during the adoption of the 2010 budget, it was understood that amendment was going to be necessary due to the transition of bringing services in-house that were formerly provided by a private company. We anticipated a savings of at least 1.3 million by terminating the contract. After this amendment, we've been able to decrease our expenditure by approximately 1.5 million. The remaining balance of roughly 8.3 million has been appropriated to fund balance at the moment. The second reason for the amendment is to account for the collection of prior year property taxes this year. As you recall, Fulton County was severely late in sending the tax digest to us last year, resulting in the late billing of taxes. Given that our fiscal year ends on September 30, and the taxes weren't billed until October 31, a majority of the tax collections fell in 2010. This, of course, was not anticipated when the budget was initially adopted, so we are simply trimming up our books with this amendment. There are four other funds that will need to, that will need budget amendments as well. The confiscated assets fund accounts for revenues and expenditures of seized drug funds, and this budget will increase by $43,895. The operating grant fund will increase by $21,364, and this fund simply captures all grant funding related and related expenditures that pertain to items that are operating in nature. The capital projects fund will increase by $553,125, and this fund is used to track revenues and expenditures associated with capital, construction, acquisition, and maintenance. And lastly, the capital grant fund will decrease by $29,685, and this fund is considered to be a capital project fund that accounts for the capital grants that fund, that are funding the projects. A more detailed accounts of these budget amendments will be given during the work session on May 10. So please note, this is a living document that will likely change throughout the course of the next two weeks until it is adopted. I'll be happy to entertain any general questions that you might have. If you do have some detailed questions, if you wouldn't mind asking those at the work session, I would appreciate it.
Okay. Are there any questions for Mr. Lewis on this from council? Do we have any public comment on this?
No, sir, we don't.
Go ahead and close the public hearing then. Okay, we don't have any items under zoning.
Would you vote on it? I believe we need to vote just because it's a first presentation. I think we need to just vote on it as though it's a first presentation.
Mayor, I move to approve the interim budget. Agenda item number 10-1127. Approval of an ordinance to adopt amendments to the fiscal 2010 budget for each fund of the City of Milton, Georgia, amending the amount shown in each budget as expenditures, amending the several items of revenue anticipation, prohibiting expenditures to exceed appropriations, and prohibiting expenditures to exceed actual funding available.
I'll second the motion.
Okay. Do I have a motion by Councilmember Luss, second by Councilmember Bailey?
Point of order. I know, I know Councilmember Luss means to have this as his first presentation item, but the motion sounded as if we're approving a budget. We might need to clarify that just for legality purposes. I don't think we need to be approving the budget on the first presentation.
I agree, we don't need to be approving the budget, and I would be comfortable doing that if the second would draw the second.
I'm happy to withdraw the second.
Just a, just a motion to approve the first presentation.
Motion to approve the first presentation.
Then I'll second that motion.
Okay, I've got a motion by Councilmember Luss, second by Councilmember Bailey. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Okay, we don't have any items on the zoning agenda or unfinished business, so we're going to move on to new business. Will the city clerk please sound the next item?
Next item was added by motion and vote. It is an approval of a contract between the City of Milton and Allied Paving and Contractors in the amount of $183,625 for a citywide asphalt patching project. Mr. Carter Lucas.
I expected to come last on that one. Mayor and Council, this is an agenda item that would have normally come to you at the May 17 regular session. Last week, we were notified by GDOT that we needed to have repairs done to a couple of the roads that have been included under their LARP program, completed by May 10 in order to have that work done on Telomora and Tulgean Drive. So we brought this contract forward to you tonight. It has been through our normal procurement process and through our legal review for approval tonight so that we can go ahead and issue a notice to proceed to our contractor to have that work completed by the May 10 deadline.
Do you have any questions for Mr. Lucas on that?
This was already in our budget.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. This will be a paving, patching, and paving project on the roads noted on the memo, citywide.
And the prioritizations that you had outlined previously are still the same?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
One question. Because we had a business item, we need to vote on this?
Yes.
Okay. Do I have a motion in a second?
I'd like to make a motion to approve a contract between the City of Milton and Allied Paving and Contractors in the amount of $183,625 for a citywide asphalt patching project.
Second. Do I have the other motion by Councilmember Hewitt, second by Councilmember Tartt? Is there any more council discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I'll pass you now.
Thank you.
Okay, will the city clerk please sound the next item?
Next item is approval of a resolution, amending resolution number 10-01130, appointing Milton Parks and Rec Advisory Board Member for District 2. This is agenda item number 10, 1128. Councilmember Julie Zoner Bailey.
I don't want to go ahead and proceed?
Sure.
Yes, I just wanted to put forward my appointment recommendation for District 2 for the Parks and Recreation Committee. That individual is Kathy Cook. And just for the record, I'll just state a few things about Mrs. Cook. Kathy Cook has been a resident of North Fulton for over 20 years and currently resides with her husband and two daughters on Birmingham Highway. Their two daughters participate in various sporting activities and also attend our local public Milton schools. Mrs. Cook has been employed with the City of Alpharetta for 19 years, and during her tenure with the city, she was the stormwater and environmental engineer and moved to the Community Development Department for the past 10 to 11 years. She also serves as the board administrator in charge of reviewing public hearing cases for the City of Alpharetta. She's also certified as a professional in erosion and sedimentation control and is also a state level 2 design professional. Kathy also was the environmental programs coordinator for the City of Alpharetta and coordinated and taught educational classes for builders and developers both. Completion of these classes were required prior to the issuance of a land disturbance permit through the City of Alpharetta. These classes also were coordinated with the City of Roswell as well as the State Soil and Water Conservation Service. Kathy Cook also has served on the City of Milton Design Review Board since its inception and currently serves as the vice chair of the city for the Milton Design Review Board. Kathy and her family have a passion for the park system and for parks and recreation throughout Milton, and they look forward to, and specifically Kathy looks forward to serving on the Parks and Recreation Committee and has been very interested in this initiative since its inception, even prior to becoming a City of Milton. Kathy's involvement as a volunteer and as a resident in Milton, in combination with her firsthand knowledge, multidisciplinary expertise, and long-term relationships with adjoining and nearby jurisdictions, will serve this committee and the community well from now and into the future. Thank you.
Okay. Does, do I have a motion in a second?
Mayor, I move to approve a resolution, amending resolution number 10-01-130, appointing Milton Parks and Recreation Advisory Board Member Kathy Cook, District 2. Agenda item 10-1128.
I'll second that.
Got a motion by Councilmember Tartt, second by Councilmember Longoria. Is there any council discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. And I don't see Kathy during the audience.
Yes, she is not. She's actually at a different meeting because we were told that we could swear her in supper from this evening, so we'll make sure that happens. Thank you, sir.
Okay, well, the city clerk, please sound the next item.
Next item is discussion and vote on Justice Norman Fletcher's proposed sewer map with Fulton County, Georgia, pursuant to the Service Delivery Strategy Act court-ordered mediation. Agenda item number 10, 1129. Mr. Ken Gerard.
Excuse me for a second. Mr. City Attorney, would you like to have a public comment now?
I would.
Okay, so would the city clerk please call up a public comment?
First public comment is from Kurt Nolte.
As a point of order, may I ask a question?
Sure. Do you want me to make my presentation first before they have public comment?
I'm just asking the city attorney, I know that oftentimes when we have, and this is under, under new business, I just didn't know if there was a particular...
I will say this, I will tell you that, you know, since, there have been some questions raised, I know about the map and particularly, but I'm happy to do my public, my presentation to council. If you want to have public comment, then that's fine as well, I'll have it either way.
I guess my question as a point of order would be, and of course, it's your pleasure of the mayor's as to whether or not the public continues with their comment now. My only request would be that if after the presentation of our staff and city attorney, should these same members have questions that otherwise they might not have had before hearing the presentation, that they be allowed to come back to the podium should they have additional comments or questions.
I think my thought would be, I'll let the mayor decide. My thought would be is that if that's going to be an issue, let's go ahead and let me do my presentation with the council and then let them speak, so it's kind of a one deal.
The only, the only thing I was thinking was that if we had public comment first and there was some question...
I could respond.
You could respond during your presentation if there was, you know, clarifications that need to be made or whatever. So, I'll tell you what, I'm going to leave that up to, I would prefer to allow these individuals to speak, and then that way, in your presentation, Mr. Attorney, you can address some of those issues, if that's the will of council.
I'm totally filed on that, Mr. Martin.
So, do I have a show of hands with the council that supports that or not?
I'm fine with that. Thank you for the clarification.
Okay. My name is Kurt Nolte. I live at 825 Doc Bridgeway in Milton, Georgia. I guess, I want to make two comments. One is, when I first heard this on the agenda day, I thought immediately that there's not enough information for your constituents for us to understand what you're voting on. You know, this has been a very political issue from the day one, you know, expansion of sewer. You guys made a decision last year, and so I thought, okay, out of the transparency in government, I think it'd be a great idea to see the map that you're voting on, to see what the ultimate map would look like. The more I thought about it today, I, you know, I started thinking and saying, you know, you guys made a decision last November, right? You guys voted, it was close, but you made a decision, and, you know, we as citizens are asked to live by the decisions you make. In this case, what I'm asking you for is to live up that decision, to, you know, to vote no on this, not to defer it, because, again, I don't think that deferral is going to change matters. You guys came to a decision, you're trying to set a precedence for Fulton County. I mean, we voted to create a city that, you know, the number one issue in my heart was... was better control over what goes on here. I think this is a classic example of, we've come to them, we've made a decision, we've said, okay, here's where, you know, the map exists, here's where we will allow sewer, and then to have the Fulton County come back and say, well, no, now you're getting it here, 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 I think that would set a terrible precedence. And I think it would be, you know, I think we just need to stand up at some point to, you know, to Fulton County and say, you know what, this is our area, we should have control of what goes on here.
Our next public comment is from Carol Lane.
My name is Carol Lane. I live at one four eight nine zero East Fluff Road, Milton, Georgia. I want to thank you for giving me the opportunity to address the city council tonight. My comment is regarding agenda item ten dash eleven twenty-nine, the vote on the proposed sewer map. When I saw this item listed on the agenda, I looked through the packet on the city website. There was no information. Please postpone this item and provide information to the citizens before voting on this extremely important issue. Thank you.
Our next public comment is from Kim Horn.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is Kim Horn. I live at four fifteen Wade Glenn Court in Milton, Georgia, and I can echo the comments from the two other constituents before me. This is a very hot issue and always has been for mayor, for the city council. Two years ago, I think it was two years ago, the four-three vote approved the Fulton County, the mayor, the map. If Fulton County didn't agree with it, that shouldn't be our issue. The issue should be, we should stand by what we voted for and what you voted for. The constituents should be allowed to weigh in on these issues. We shouldn't be making a decision just because it was a court-ordered mediation. And I, I do have a couple of questions about that court-ordered mediation. When will the public be able to see what was the mediation? Is the mediation legally binding? You know, tonight, is there something that you legally have to vote on? Is this just one person's mediation's opinion? Is it fact? What kind of research did they do to come up with this so-called new map? You know, I have seen the map because I asked for it, but that was only because I asked for it. No one else, that I, I don't know of any other people that have asked for it. They didn't know. The constituents voted, all of you into council. You have to let the constituents have a chance to voice their opinions. They have to see what's out there and what's going to be voted on. If they choose at that point not to give an opinion, then they don't, then that's their problem. But they have to be given a choice to have an opinion before a decision is made. Things can't be voted on in a vacuum, and if it's voted on tonight, it's going to be done in a vacuum. If it's voted on and you stick by the map that was approved, as Mr. Nolte said, then that's one thing. We all live with what you voted on before. But I feel very strongly that if you in your heart don't have a, haven't heard from the citizens, you have to give the citizens a chance to voice their opinions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our final public comment is from Dennis Potts.
Mayor and Council, thank you for talking to me tonight. I live at twenty-seven forty-five Webb Road, and as you all know, I'm as passionate about this sewer as anybody. I've been here since the very beginning. This has been going on for, we're looking at about four years almost now, and it seems like it's nothing but a big political merry-go-round. And I know, I haven't seen this map, and doesn't, I don't really care to see it. What I do want to do is support tonight that you go ahead and support this mediated map, because there's got to get a starting point here somewhere. We're not going to get anywhere. We keep going back and forth, back and forth. We need to at least take a stand, listen to what Mr. Gerard has to say, and at least then we've got someplace to start. And then from that point on, you can start working on other pieces of property like mine or anybody else's that might really rightfully need and want sewer. I'm not, I don't think anybody wants to see the sewer go into the rural areas, but it's wrong to have sewer not available to commercial properties and properties that all along should have been sewered. That's about all I have to say. Thank you.
Okay, I'll turn this over to Mr. Gerard, and maybe that was part of the reason I thought it might be best to get public comment first, because there may be some...
I heard some questions.
Some questions that maybe you can answer too.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let me begin by saying this. We are here tonight at the request of Judge Norman Fletcher, who is the mediator that is mediating the Service Delivery Strategy Act negotiation between Fulton County and all of the cities. This is a court-ordered mediation. This is under the jurisdiction of District Superior Court, and Mr. Fletcher, Judge Fletcher, former Chief Justice Fletcher, has the authority to direct, or at least strongly request, which I recommend that we abide by, duly authorized mediators directed, to consider this issue. The request is also made to Fulton County, which will be considering this matter on Wednesday evening, as I understand it. Where does this map come from? One of the speakers was correct, it was actually September of oh eight when this council voted on the last map involving sewer. Now, it's important to understand that we voted on a proposed map and on a proposed intergovernmental agreement, and that intergovernmental agreement and that map were not accepted by Fulton County, and therefore, we have no sewer map except that which is, we had referred to it as the blob map from the old Service Delivery Strategy Act negotiations years ago, and it is a very imprecise indiscriminate map that is somewhat difficult to interpret, but that's where we are. The product of this map is, in other words, I think one of the questions is, where does this map come from? Well, it, it came from the product of the city manager and I going down to multiple negotiation sessions with the authority of council and working through these issues with the mediator privately, and then with Fulton County, in front of the mediator in a joint caucus, and seeing if we could work out a deal. And as Justice Fletcher will tell you, we have reached an impasse, which is Milton feels like it's gone to a point, Fulton feels like it's gone to a point, and now, I think the mediator, and again, these are the delegations, by the way, these are delegations of the various jurisdictions. The reality is, whenever you negotiate with the government, everyone knows you have to take it back and let the government authorities adopt it or agree to it, and we don't have any of that. So this is Justice Fletcher's way of trying to get a consensus of where he is. Where are we? Do we agree? Do we not agree? Do we have an agreement? Do we not have an agreement? Is this impasse? Is it not impasse? What can we do to break through the logjam? This is one of many issues he's dealing with as part of the SDS negotiations. This is simply the one that implicates Fulton County. If you were to vote tonight, whatever decision you make with respect to this vote, here's what I recommend. I recommend we vote on it. I do not recommend that we don't follow the directive of the mediator. I recommend that we do vote on it, and if you do vote on it, whatever the outcome of that vote, I don't know what it's going to be, but whatever the outcome of it is, will be communicated back to the mediator. Now, if it is a, a, an outcome that results in a compromise, we don't have an IGA yet. You will not have voted on an IGA. At some point in the future, if we work out a deal or you adopt a map tonight that results in a compromise, we, Chris and I will take that back to the mediator, and we will advise that we have a deal. At some point in the future, you will vote on either a settlement agreement or an intergovernmental agreement, but that will not be an opportunity, respectfully, for us to revisit this issue again. That will be simply ratifying what we've already agreed to. I hope y'all understand what I'm saying. I don't feel like we can go back to the mediator and say we have a deal and then come back and revisit the issue from scratch in six months. So there, there are going to be consequences. Now, if we vote to reject the map or to reject any sort of compromise or, or, or take steps that result in, you know, rejection of, of all offers, then the mediation will presumably go forward. But at some point, our issue will simply be taken off the table and it will be put into those category of things that will be tried, that will be part of the litigated Service Delivery Jack issues. I don't know when that will be. I will tell you that based upon the city manager and I's repeated trips down to Fulton County into Atlanta, that, that there have been, there are a lot of issues, and so it could be a long time before this issue is put to bed. That's just the facts. I don't know when, but I will tell you this, we've been at this long enough where I think the time is, is coming close where the mediator, you want to get compromised or simply try. Let me tell you what, and I think I've already forecasted this, oh, and with respect to this evening, I want to talk about that very briefly. Can we go forward? You know, we can go forward. All, all that has been, all that is required under the Open Meetings Act and even with our rules of procedure, is that we publish a notice, a call, and an agenda, and we have published all of those things, and in fact, I think the agenda item fairly identifies what we are talking about this evening. We are talking about a sewer map that is the product of Judge Fletcher and his interest and involvement in our mediation. It has been put together to reflect that it's a map that he has proposed, and it would involve Fulton County's sewer boundary with Milton. That's what the agenda item says. I think that is a fair depiction of what we're talking about, and so I think you are lawfully entitled to go forward this evening. I don't think it's far from necessary. With respect to the map, I wanted to, to show you what we were talking about, and I think there's a map projected on the screen. In front of you, you ought to see a map that has some lines that say a red N and a green Obviously, if it's a Y, that would be a sewered map. If it is an N, that would be a non-sewered map. For purposes of ease of reference, I have also provided to you a copy of the blue map, which was the September of oh eight sewer agreement or sewer map that was approved in September of oh eight. And it's not terribly technical, but I have circled the areas where sewer would become part of the boundary, that it is not part of the boundary in the oh eight map. And I hope you all can understand my methodology in doing that. It's fairly straightforward. That's the, the blue area on that map is the sewer boundary of approved in oh eight. The black circles would be the additional sewer boundary as reflected in Judge Fletcher's map. So if you were to approve all of them, that's what that would look like. Right now, what Judge Fletcher wants us to vote on is this map right here.
Can you clarify when you refer to another, a different map with blue that you're circling? Are you referring to this map?
Right there.
Can you further clarify that you said everything circled, because...
That's, what I'm saying is, I'm pointing out the differences, is what I'm pointing out.
And I just want to make sure I'm clear, because the map that we had from Judge, Justice Fletcher, had not all of them as part of this proposal, only a portion?
That's correct.
And just to clarify, what I heard you saying, I think, Mr. Gerard, was that in your map, it was those that would be added, but on his map, only, well, I shouldn't say only, but one, two, three, four are being added, and you've got seven circled. Wouldn't this need to be four circled?
I'm, what I'm suggesting is that the ones circled are the, are the parcels that are disputed or in play. Do you understand?
So if there was a vote to approve his recommended mediation, it would not be that all of these would then become...
That's correct. Correct.
Because I don't think that's what I heard. I heard that all seven of these would be.
Correct. Those are the parcels in play.
Thank you.
And that's it. And again, let me just, let me just repeat, depending upon what the council wants to do, depending upon the action the council takes, obviously, that will be communicated back to the mediator as the mediator has demanded, and we will do that. And that could be, that could encompass a host of results. That could either result in compromise, in which case this matter simply becomes, actually would be behind us. It could result in further mediation, or it could result in impasse and ultimately litigation. Those are the, sort of the options we're looking at, and I'm certainly willing to take any questions that y'all have.
Okay, thank you, Mr. City Attorney. Are there questions from council to, to the city attorney?
Ken, on this map, you've got seven things circled, and on the map that's sitting in front of us, there's eight. Now, I can sort of figure out where the missing piece is, but I just wanted to make sure you didn't leave one off on purpose. The, the difference is, is that on the, the blue map, if you look on parcel twenty-two eleven thirty-seven...
Oh, yeah, those numbers that I can't read? Okay.
Yes, twenty-two eleven thirty-seven. I didn't circle that one.
Okay. That's all.
Okay, can you point out, again, I don't think, I think Mr. Longoria was being correct, is that we can't read these numbers. Can you be more specific in terms of maybe going from left to right, which specific parcel you're referencing?
Right. Going from left to right, you see the first circle farthest left, then there's one over the second circle, and then the third immediate area is, there's a circle above the parcel, third, third circle from the left. Down below that is the all-blue area. Okay, I didn't circle that one. I did not circle that.
Should it be green or should it be blue?
Well, that was part of the city's approved sewer map, so we could circle that one, but that would be under the proposal by Justice Fletcher. That is a yes for sewer.
And again, those that you circled are not those that would be those in total that are being recommended or proposed, not even recommended, but proposed as a possible mediation by the judge. It's four of those seven that you've circled.
Let me do, yeah, let's, let's focus on this.
Thank you.
That was simply put it there so you could see what you approved back in oh eight versus today, but this is the map that the judge asked that we look at. That was simply for reference purposes, I thought, something that you might have handy to look at.
I have a couple of questions.
Okay.
Can, Mr. Gerard, you mentioned that Justice Fletcher has asked us to consider, obviously, it's not a legally binding mediation, it's not even a recommendation. I think I heard you said that there was an impasse based on his assessment of the data from both the City of Milton and Fulton County. I also heard you recommend that we vote on it this evening. Could you clarify for me, however, I had thought that we had a date of May fourteenth that we were supposed to provide information back?
Yes, ma'am.
Is it fair to say that between now and May fourteenth, we have two additional meetings whereby we could consider this? I guess that's the first question, part A.
We've got a work session on May the tenth, which we could, obviously, consider it. The meeting that we have is, the only other meeting we have referenced in your second one is the meeting of May fourteenth, correct?
That's where we have a meeting on...
We do, and it's not until four-thirty in the afternoon, then we have, to be down to Fulton County. I think it's ten o'clock that morning, so I don't know that that meeting...
So the fourteenth, so we would have the tenth.
Opens up an opportunity. So it would be the works, it would be the work session...
Or a special call meeting, as we often do.
Or a special call meeting on the tenth.
Correct. And so I just wanted to clarify that, that the input from the court was not that we had to have a decision today, it was that you needed to be equipped by the fourteenth.
Yes, ma'am.
And we do have meetings and days between now, and then we call special call meetings all the time. The reason for that question is that we've heard from these citizens as well as others that the data that was out on the website did not include, obviously, the map that we now have the benefit of seeing ourselves. And so that's one consideration from a perspective of transparency. It, it speaks loud and clear to me when I hear citizens say that they would like the opportunity to review information, and we're indicating that we've not provided that, nor that we have the opportunity, because I think we do have the opportunities, which was just affirmed by the city attorney as well as our staff. I'd also like to clarify, I heard a, a point made by one of the citizens that spoke that was asking for a decision this evening in order that this be a starting point for further discussions. I think therein lies part of the concern about continued sewer extension, is that we would have some people that would have the perception that if we're yet, this evening, willing to adopt and accept some additional sewer extension for some parcels, that we're opening up, opening up Pandora's box yet again to start to consider additional parcels. Could you clarify, Mr. City Attorney, if, if you believe that this is a starting point, if you believe that this would continue to be a dialogue, not a item that would indeed just be ratified? Because I, I think I heard a couple of different things this evening, that this would potentially be ratified in the future if we voted, if a majority voted yes, but then I also heard that there would potentially be continued mediation beyond the fourteenth.
Okay, well, let me try to answer it as best I could. First of all, I don't view this as a starting point. I mean, the Service Delivery Strategy Negotiation has been a long, ongoing, protracted effort. It has been difficult, and it has been expensive, and it would be something that would continue to be, it would not be ongoing. It would simply be if we agree to this, then this is the deal that we would have with Fulton County. This would be our boundary, and we would ratify it by way of an intergovernmental agreement. So to the extent that, that it's being suggested this would be simply a starting point, we ratify this, and then it would be, and then we'll look at, at other properties, and I mean, no disrespect to anybody in the gallery, but I will tell you, that's not what I would be thinking. I would be thinking is this would be a, this would be a final, this would be final. This has not been easy. This is not something that has been done cavalierly or hap, you know, haphazardly. This would be final.
And with all due respect, back in September of 2008, when that vote was taken, it was indicated that that too would be a final vote. And I realize that Fulton County has not agreed to the IGA based on the vote of September of 2008. It also speaks loud and clear to me when I hear citizens indicating that while that vote may have been painful, that some people accept now that that was the vote, and therefore that should continue to be the position of this council on behalf of our city. Again, what the judge has recommended is that we at least weigh in, not, he did not say that this needs to be the decision made.
Can I, can I stop you right there? Because that's what I was forecasting already, and I want to mention that. You know, I don't have an agreement to give to you this evening. I don't have a written IGA to give to the council, so this can be full and absolutely final. But I think what the judge does want, which is what anybody who's leading a mediation wants, is he wants to know where the parties are, and that can only be done by you, and that can only be done in a situation where you vote on it and, and decide where we are. If, depending upon what your vote is, depending upon what your vote is, I would simply take that information back to him, the city manager, and I would, and tell the mediator, if the issue is resolved, if we have compromise, there would be no further action on this. It would be part, it would be put into that pocket of things that are resolved. If it's not, we will continue to go down the mediation slash potential litigation.
Can I clarify one thing? My understanding is, even if, if we were to approve what the mediator has recommended, which is basically pretty much splitting it down the middle, it still has to go to Fulton County.
Yes, sir.
And they have to approve it. If they were to not approve it...
Yes, sir.
Then we go back to square one.
That's right.
And then ultimately, it goes to court, and we...
If, if, if they don't approve it, Mr. Mayor, and, and of course, it's always chicken or egg, depends what we do, but if they don't approve it, then we are back at the mediation session until such time as Judge Fletcher simply says, there is incontrovertible impasse here. I need the judge to decide these issues.
Sure. Go ahead, Charles.
So, just to understand, Fulton's position, Fulton County's position, is that they want to provide service to these eight parcels. Our position was, we didn't want them to provide service to these eight parcels. We go into mediation, the judge takes, the mediator takes a look at it and does the 50-50 thing on us, where he picks half of the, the parcels and says, yes, there can be sewer here, half, no, there can't be sewer here, and now we're ready to vote on that, and we've been spending a lot of time on this?
That is not entirely correct. Fulton County's position is that they had already granted sewer to these parcels, and taking it away, that would put them at a risk legally, because according to Fulton County, these parcels had already been granted sewer by Fulton County, which was the authority to grant sewer at the time, and this was not extending sewer.
So, all right, so, be that as it may.
Let, let me do the, the best I can with that answer. The answer is, is that when both parties showed up to mediation, Milton's position was none of these, and Fulton's was, you know, all of these. And that's been Fulton's position throughout. Now, this is sort of, yeah, it's a split-the-baby approach. It's, let's see if we can work something out for compromise. But again, this is something that, I mean, although the Fulton delegation may support it, the Fulton Commission has by no means indicated...
So the only real way to make sure that Fulton adopts our option is to say, hey, we'll go back to the original, what, what you guys had requested? Because otherwise, we're still in mediation over, over this decision?
That's the only way you would know, I mean, that's the only way you'd know for certain, because that would be, that, that would be their bottom line. That's what they came to mediation with.
And this has been going on for how long?
Two years. Well, I mean, this, this issue has been going on since '07.
Really?
You don't want to know how much this has been on it.
Can I, can I make a point of, or, I'm sorry, wait.
It's been a fast three years.
It's been a fast three years.
All right, well, let's just, let's continue. Is there any more questions on this, for our city attorney, city attorney or staff?
I'd like to respond to the, the statement that was just made, and it, and it does bring up a question with regard to the dialogue about what Fulton County had wanted. Mr. Gerard, can you please, and/or Mr. Lagerblum, has Fulton County ever come forward with anything that is of legal standing, legal evidence, any evidence that indicates these parcels, whether all eight or any of the eight, actually have a legally binding right to sewer extension?
Yeah, I, I have never seen a document by Fulton County that, that puts that particular argument on it. Now, Fulton County attorney has written me previously and told me some policy reasons of why they think these parcels should be subject to sewer, or to, to further expand upon Fulton's position, but as far as sitting me down and showing me the documents, no, I cannot...
There's been zero documents. And if we were to go back to September of 2008, is it fair to say, Mr. Gerard, that into the record, you provided a legal statement into the record that said none of these parcels were to have been provided sewer, and that this would indeed be sewer extension, whether it be one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, or eight, any one of these parcels?
And that's, that's what I said in 2008.
And I'd also like to say, and my question is, there was also a document that was presented and put forward by Alice Wakefield, our community development director at the time. We all have that documentation, and that document highlighted these red parcels that were now seen on the map before us, and that documentation also indicated that any of those that were identified were red, were not to be sewered because they fell outside of the Big Creek Sewer Basin. These were all definitively within the Etowah River Basin, and that they were not to have been sewored. Is, is that correct?
That's what I recall, and, and it's important to remember, you know, that sewer extension was an operational definition back then, that was basically what were the rules of the ordinances or the regulations in effect in kind of Milton's creation that allowed sewer to go to different areas? It is a fairly fact-intensive exercise that we underwent, and that was the working operational definition at that time. Now, obviously, there are people that disagree with my analysis.
And my, my question, however, city attorney, who's been our city attorney for quite some time, and, and I appreciate your legal expertise and wisdom, is it fair to say that in September of 2008, your legal opinion was, and as recently as last week, continued to be that these parcels represented sewer extension, and that was your statement into the record?
Using the operational definition at the time in '08 that we were using.
I do find it interesting that operational definition is the first time that it's been referred to in that way, but yes, and I appreciate that.
Well, no, I mean, all I'm saying is, is that that's what, that, that's what that meant, is that it was using the rules and regs that we looked at when Milton was created.
And, and I think that factually, it's important to remain with the facts as they've been presented as a matter of record. And just as a matter of record, the document I was referring to that Alice Wakefield put together was the September 12th document of 2008, and I will submit that for the record so it becomes part of the record, where she expressly listed all of the land lots and referred to them as the, the red parcels that subsequently was part of her documentation from staff's perspective. I, I do have a, a question, and maybe it's more of a statement back to Mr. Longoria, because I realize that Mr. Longoria is more recently part of our council, and I sure appreciate his perspective. The history of the non-sewer areas goes back far beyond before we were the city of Milton, and it was that these parcels were never identified as sewerable. They were part of the Etowah Basin, which was distinct and was, for all intensive purposes, supposed to remain unsewered. They also were outside of the crabapple master planned area, and while there are sometimes statements that indicate that these parcels were quote-unquote "promised," again, there's nothing legally binding, and if we were to walk outside and promise someone in this audience or elsewhere that we'd one day like to give them a million dollars, that promise doesn't mean that we're to deliver on that legally. And I would, for the record, like to state that going back to an article of 1995 where Bob Fulton is quoted, and I'll submit this for the record as well, it said with the passage of the resolution introduced by Commissioner Bob Fulton, specifically is the No Inter Basin Transfer Documentation, it says, "The county reaffirmed its comprehensive land use plan, which does not provide for the extension of sewer lines into the area," referring to the unincorporated North Fulton area. It went on to quote, it says, "The resolution means that there will be no higher-density housing above the fall line served by Big Creek or Johns Creek Sewerage Treatment Plants," Fulton said. Sewerage is the key to controlling the density in the area, and at that time, it was Frank Bachman, Chief Engineer for Fulton County Department of Public Works. He says, "You can pipe all the water you want, but you can't get the high-density housing without sewer." And, and that is a matter of record from 1995, and to address any perplexity that may be to my left, it's that the documentation, legally binding maps that everybody counted on, were based on that history and based on the comprehensive land use plan that we adopted.
Sure. I want to go ahead and counsel over.
Well, I mean, in 1960, IBM said that the worldwide market for computers was four. So I, I don't know, understand what that has in, in terms of bearing on, on this decision, because the real issue here is that nobody's going to be holding a gun to anybody's head to use the sewer. If the sewer is available, it becomes the issue with the landowner as to whether or not they need access to sewer. And here we are, we've got a, an individual citizen sitting in the audience right now who's been dealing with this for four years. We need to give this man a choice. This isn't extension. This is giving the property owner access to something that he needs. And, you know, it, it seems a little silly to me that we're even arguing about this and that we're spending money and that it's been going on for as long as it's, as it has. So to me, all we're really voting on is should the citizens of Milton have the choice, or should somebody else have the choice? And I'm voting for giving the citizens of Milton a choice.
So just so that I'm clear, are you suggesting that we're voting to offer up sewer extension to anybody that requests it?
No. I'm talking about these eight parcels. That's what makes this so silly.
And, you know, we're keeping on, on point. We're not going backwards there. Is anyone else, is there someone else?
I'd like to make one last comment if I, if I could. It's my understanding that the Fulton County attorney, which represents Fulton County, whose policy it was we adopted, has stated this is not an extension of sewer. Is that correct?
I think that is correct, Councilmember Thurman.
So I, and my thought is the Fulton County attorney ought to understand what Fulton County's policy is better than anybody. And unless, to be honest with you, unless you're willing to defend us for free, if we get sued and defend Fulton County for free, if they get sued on all of this, I'm not willing to spend any more legal fees, and I don't think our citizens are either, in these tiny little parcels here that we've been discussing for four years. That money could have been spent on roads and everything else that badly need to be spent on in the city. These are very small parcels. It's time for us to put something to bed and start working for our citizens.
Okay. Does anyone have any other questions or would like to make a motion?
If you have a question at the end of the table.
Tell them.
Question for you, Mr. Gerard, is the attorney that is stating Fulton County's claim that this isn't sewer extension, is that the attorney that was around back when these claims or promises of sewer were made, or is this a new attorney that's just recently come aboard since I was elected?
You know, Councilmember Thurman, I don't know which particular attorney has, has opined that. They don't really act that way. Their, their offices, issues, memorandums, and obviously the letters, I mean, and, and they're, they're not going to use that vernacular. I mean, they believe there are legal entitlements to sewer in these parcels. They don't really use the term sewer extension so much. That's, that's, and that's what I mean, but Councilmembers aren't available. That's, that's a construct we have here, and that's why I, I'm not trying to weasel out of what I said earlier. I'm simply saying that's, it's a term of art. It's got an operational definition, and for me, it was the assignment I was given by, you know, way. That's all I'm trying to say. I, I stand by what I said.
And my question is about the legal constraints, is to your point, and the question just raised, nothing in three years has produced any information that indicates that anybody has a legal right to sewer extension, whether you call it sewer extension or the operational definition of sewer extension, is that never has anybody produced anything legally. And don't you think that if somebody had a legal right, including anybody in this audience, to sewer extension, that they would have produced it long before today?
Well, that's, I want to get back to Councilmember Thurman's question. The, the question was, is the city, the county attorney's office in Fulton County, though, has delivered to me correspondence where they make their, their basic public policy arguments that sewer ought to be provided in these areas, and certainly they claim some stoppable arguments that certain representations have been made. All I will tell you was, is, is that I, I hear them, I understand them. I'm not here to tell you I necessarily agree with them. Now, does that mean that if we got into a courtroom, they would not put pen to paper and not put arguments as best they could in front of the judge? Of course they would be. And, and they haven't done that yet because they haven't been made to, but I stand by my, you know, my position from, from away. I'm not going backwards.
Yeah, and, you know, I certainly don't want to relive the, the dark history of fall of 2008 any more than anybody else up here does. But nevertheless, you know, this is a politically charged issue. It always has been since before the city was ever incepted. It has been, you know, a major issue in every election since we've become, become a city. Thousands of dollars have been spent on this issue, and I know that many of you believe that that is, it is for that reason that thousands of dollars have been spent defending this issue, that we should just put it to bed right now and be done with it. And it's for the exact same reason I feel like it would be in vain for us to all of a sudden, you know, spend thousands of dollars to tote the party line and what we believe is right for our city, and then all of a sudden just say, well, just forget about all that. Let's accept whatever Fulton County says, or some semblance of splitting it down the line. With that said, I divide my comments and, and questions into two parts. One has to do with just the announcement and public availability of the map, and the others have to do with sewer extension itself. With regard to sewer extension itself, you know, I wish I could bet right now on, I know the way this vote's going to go down. So, I mean, I just wish I'd be a rich man if I could vote on this. I mean, bet on this right now. But nevertheless, I'm entitled to my opinion. And like I said, I think that the thousands of dollars we spend on this issue already would be in vain if we don't continue to do what we feel is right for our city. I think that Mr. Potts, you know, I understand your plight, and it, it is for the comments that you have made that really has me fearful of accepting this map. And I know there's a matter of debate of whether, if we approve this map and it gets approved into an IGA, whether this sets policy, excuse me, sets precedent. But, you know, I have yet to have been told what made Justice Fletcher choose these four parcels over the eight that were in play versus any other parcel for that matter, including Mr. Potts, for sewer. I don't know what sets these four parcels apart from any of the rest of the other four parcels, and for that matter, any other parcel in the city of Milton. So I have a hard time understanding how, if approving this, without any idea of what sets these parcels apart from any other parcel in the city of Milton that might want sewer, I have a hard time understanding how that would not, or could not, be used against us in the future to ask for sewer. In fact, there's sewer, there's, there's parcels in the city that are completely surrounded by sewer, not just fronted on one side. So, I mean, you know, approving this arbitrarily without any understanding of how Justice Fletcher came up with these four, I, I have a hard time with that. The second part being the fact that I'm trying to understand the process by which this was announced, and I brought to Chris's attention, Mr. Lagerblum's attention over the weekend, and brought you into the, Mr. Gerard, about the fact that the map was not posted, and neither was the letter from Justice Fletcher. You know, I heard you use words like, you know, we've done all that's required, we're lawfully entitled to proceed with a vote tonight. I just have a hard time with this being such a politically charged issue, that citizens are really up in arms about this issue and always have been, that we would proceed with this vote with it not being posted, yet we would, we, we post a contract for $40,000 on the web that we have to approve two weeks in advance. I don't, I don't understand, and I need, and that's my question, I need to understand how we could get a map to citizens that ask for it today, but we couldn't provide a letter when, when the map is the basis of the letter? And how we could provide the map when we really didn't even get Justice Fletcher's permission to release the map? So I'm having a hard time understanding the release of information and the posting of information.
Let me take the first response, first part of that response, and I'll, Ken, take the second part of the response. The reason it didn't publish in the package as it usually does is because of what we did last month, just happened to be the way the meetings felt, what we did last month by putting the meetings back because of spring break. We ended up with the last Monday of the month having a meeting, as well as the first Monday being this Monday. The agenda actually published last week before you all in executive session had the opportunity to learn of this information. And that's just a bad place to be, to have something that qualifies for executive session for the council, but to have it released to the public before that. So it was simply the matter of timing, why it didn't go out in the packet last week. because people would have known about it before. You all know about an executive session and that's just not a good place to be. All I can answer maybe the second portion is to some of the confidentiality things we've had to sign and some of the different ways the mediation works.
Yeah, mediation, mediation is supposed to be privileged. That's the whole trick. I mean, mediation stands its best chance of success if the parties don't run out and bring a lot of scrutiny to what is going on in mediation. The thought being is that decisions made without being addressed are typically better than decisions made. Is publishing of Judge Fletcher's letter improper? It caused me enough concern that I wanted his permission before I did it. It's a letter from a court ordered mediator to the city council. You know, if you lined up 12 attorneys and asked them, six may go one way and six may go the other, I would feel more comfortable. I learned of this issue, that it wasn't issue at all last night or yesterday afternoon. I just wasn't able to get hold of Judge Fletcher to get his permission. I still haven't heard from him. That's all, that's all there is to it. There's no secrecy to it. I would just have rather had his buy off on that before I post his letter to the council on a webpage. That's it. The map, the map doesn't concern me. The map is what it is, the map that y'all are going to talk about tonight and display on the screen. I have no concerns with that. Never had that concern.
And then my final comment, Mayor, is that, and I understand that, I also understand that this decision is not expected until 10 o'clock on May 14th.
Correct.
And given the issue that we're talking about here and given just our objective to provide open and transparent government, I don't understand what the rush is to vote on this tonight. Kind of takes me back reminiscing to September 08 when we voted on this. It seemed to be rushed as well, but I'll just defer to everyone else.
I'd like to just make a statement for the audience here and kind of recollection. I'll take the, I'll be the fall guy for September of 2008 to try to put this, put this thing to bed. Ever since we've become a city, it has been a political issue and a hotbed and a lot of contention. And, you know, we can go back to 1996, 1995 and to 2006 when we became a city and look at Fulton County's sewer map. And it was not very clear. It was also, there were a lot of areas that had changed since 96, even though they hadn't changed their policy. I think Mr. Longoria's neighborhood was a non-sewered area, but had been there for several years with sewer and there were several areas. So, basically what I did was ask the county, I said, you know, as we took over the city of Milton in 2006, where is the line of the sewered area that the county had planned on having sewer, had either promised or planned and was servicing versus where the line wasn't, where there was non-sewered areas? And that, the map that Fulton County gave us was the one we've been discussing. Now, the council voted to accept a map that had eight parcels shy of what the county said was the sewered area. I agree with some comments somebody made before that, you know, the county was running the sewer system, supplying sewer and in charge, so I would think they would know more about it than we did. My point is, I don't think anyone up here wanted to quote, "extend sewer service outside those boundaries." We can go all day with definition of extending sewer or not. Well, if you add a one-foot piece of pipe onto another pipe, you're extending sewer. I think the real issue here is defining the line that would be marked in stone in 2006 when we took over and not allowing that line to creep. And I believe this is where we are. We're very close. There was eight parcels difference between what the council agreed to or the majority of council agreed to two years ago and what the county's saying now. So, it's very obvious what the judge is doing. He's saying, hey, you know, four and four, take four and give four, trying to come down the middle. Again, we don't know whether Fulton County will agree with that or not. Fulton County doesn't agree with it because they think they're right, you know, we're going to go to court. If we don't approve this map tonight, then we'll go to court too because, you know, the judge won't, we won't have a decision. So, at this point, it's up to the council. I'll be glad, no matter how this vote goes, I'll buy anybody's lunch that wants to sit down with me and go over the map and discuss it. But at this point, we've got to make a decision, either to deny this recommendation from the judge or accept it or anything else. So, I'm willing to open up the floor for a motion and a direction to go.
May I ask a quick question?
Sure.
If, just for a matter of bringing us back full center, the judge at this point provided a map that shows the addition of four parcels and that's what's before us. Is that correct?
That is the map that the letter from the judge asked us to look at this evening?
That's the one with the parcels with the yes next to it.
Just to clarify, that's whether you look at the glass half full or half empty. It's also a map showing, based on what Fulton County says, deleting four parcels. So, it's, he was trying to hit it down the middle on it, so. Anyone have a motion or direction they'd like to take this?
I have a motion.
All right.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to disapprove Norman Fletcher's proposed sewer series map of Fulton County pursuant to the sewer, excuse me, the Service Delivery Strategy Act court ordered mediation, agenda item 10-1129.
I would second that motion.
Okay. I have a motion by Councilmember Tark and second by Councilmember Bailey. Is there any council discussion? Okay. Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Was, I didn't see that, but we had.
Two to five. It failed five to two.
Okay. Open the floor back up for any more questions or motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve Judge Norman Fletcher's map here and designate it by calling it Exhibit Eight, which shows eight parcels on it, four of them to be designated as Y and four designated as no. And my motion is to approve the map in its entirety, including all eight parcels. That's my motion.
Okay. Is there a second on that motion?
Mr. Mayor, may I ask for a point of clarification, please?
Sure.
Councilmember Lusk, just so I understand, you said to approve all eight parcels. Is that to approve all eight as if they were the yes?
Yes, yes, parcel, yes, sir.
I'll second that. Got a second by Councilmember Lusk. Most of our Councilmember Lusk was seconded by Councilmember Longoria. Any discussion?
I have a question, Mayor. So, just so that I'm clear, so we have a judge that recommended mediation, or not that recommended mediation, came forward with a recommendation for mediation that would have taken four parcels and extended sewer to those four. And now, not only is there a motion before us to approve the judge's recommendation of only four, but the motion on the floor, I just want to clarify, is actually to go beyond judge's mediation and add an additional four to add a total of eight parcels for sewer extension. Am I clear on the motion? Is that this goes four parcels beyond what the judge has recommended?
Well, yes.
And I'm happy to ask the maker of the motion or the seconder of the motion. I just want to make sure I'm clear.
Well, I don't want a judge to make decisions on what a citizen of Milton can or can't do.
Can I be clear, Mr. Longoria? Mr. Dennis Potts isn't part of any of these eight. Mr. Dennis Potts has property that's completely not indicated, so if we approve this, he doesn't get an option. I just want to make sure because we're.
No, let me clarify, these items that were in.
No, no, I was confused that that doesn't matter to me.
Okay.
Okay?
Because I was confused about that.
I'm not sitting up here defending Dennis Potts. That's not my job. My job is to defend all the citizens of Milton. And so, I'm looking at all those citizens sitting there in the red parcels that are surrounded by sewer and don't have access to it and I just want to give them the choice. I'm not saying you've got to take it. That's not what I'm saying. I'm just saying you should have the choice.
Even though every, even though every other map prior to now, including those that citizens have been provided, that citizens have had a discussion about, that said no sewer extension, and I like as a point of order, I guess my question is, I know that some citizens joined us after public comment was closed. Is there any opportunity, Mayor, since there's, now not only are we talking about a map nobody saw, we're now talking about a map and a motion that goes so far beyond what the judge even recommended? I just wonder if, I'm looking at perplexed faces that haven't had an opportunity to see any information. Would we, as a matter or point of order, be allowed to ask a citizen that didn't have an opportunity to speak before, to speak, or those that spoke to be able to respond now that they've had the information from the city attorney?
The problem is, councilmembers, we have a pending motion and second.
To my, as a point of order, my question is, would, because we've got citizens and to the point of Mr. Councilmember Longoria, is that we want to hear from our citizens. We've got some citizens here who came, who look more perplexed than ever and I'd like, as a point of order, and in line with your comment, is to allow our citizens to have commentary.
Well, I spent quite a bit of time researching this issue and I've talked to quite a few citizens, okay? Some people that are in the audience tonight and a lot of people who aren't. And so, I feel pretty confident in my opinion on this. It's, and I'm not making it in a vacuum and I'm not just pulling some crazy idea out of the air. This is based on a lot of thoughtful consideration. I think that every single member of the council up here is doing something that they consider important and it's based on thoughtful consideration on their part. And to imply that that's not the case isn't right, so.
I'm surely not implying that you've not given it consideration. My concern is that the statement that was made that we're considering citizens' opportunity to choose is that, in fact, I believe that we're precluding citizens from choosing when we go and make a decision to extend sewer to areas that through our land use planning process, through surveys, through voting mechanisms, where these citizens have said sewer should not be extended into some of these parcels. Some of the parcels that are circled are not fully surrounded by sewer, have not been promised sewer, don't have access to sewer, and it would indeed provide sewer extension.
And Julie, Councilmember Zonan Bailey, the real issue that I have is I don't want to spend any more money litigating or mediating this issue. And the only way that I know to do that is to follow Councilmember Lusk's motion to go back to the Fulton map because that's what they agreed to. So, if we agree to that, then all this legal stuff is over. And to me, that makes the most sense. We're not talking about bulldozing halfway through Milton and, you know, running sewer out everywhere. We're only talking about affecting, you know, 1% of the city.
I think those that live north of the current no sewer extension line, including that which is circled as a definitive no by the judge that goes up and north into Birmingham Highway, that goes up and north and gets closer to Kensington Farms, I would disagree wholeheartedly.
Yeah, and I, again, this is, this is all about bringing to an end something that I think is not a good use of city resources in terms of spending money on this.
And the city resources, with all due respect, have already been expended. And why in the world would we go beyond what the judge who has mediated this and provided a recommendation to provide sewer to areas that were never contemplated for sewer, including those that say currently in under the judge's hand?
What, what you said, never contemplated for sewer? Fulton County, as I said, these parcels already have sewer. So, obviously Fulton County has already, in their view, given these parcels all sewer.
Do you have any evidence, as an example, this parcel on the far right?
They provided us a map, it was their policy.
That says that they have sewer already? I beg, with all due respect.
May I like to call a question?
With all due respect, this parcel down by Bethany, can you confirm for me as a matter of record, as a point of order? Is the parcel on the far right?
We've got a call to question.
May I ask as a point of order?
Well, there's been a motion, oh, is there, was there a motion to call a question?
Mayor, one final question.
There's a motion and a second and then we've had a request to call a question.
And I ask my question before the call for the question.
It's point of order, I'm just asking. The motion, the motion needs to be voted on. It's not debatable. It's a motion to call the question requires a sewer.
Okay. Does that mean that we need to vote on, to call the, the motion to call the question?
If there's been a second, yes.
Or to finish the, Councilmember Bailey's question?
Do I still have the opportunity to ask the mayor a question?
Well, that's the point of order.
Procedurally, I believe, once a motion has been made to call a question, that takes precedent.
Even if we're in the midst of discussion?
That's, that's the point of the motion.
Is there a second?
A second motion?
So, we've got a motion and a second to call the question.
Yes, it needs to be a vote on, it's not debatable.
Okay. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Who's opposed?
I think we're going to need a hand vote, Mayor.
Okay, I'm sorry, and the question was specifically the motion?
This is to end discussion and vote on the motion to approve all eight parcels.
That's correct.
It just, if you, if you vote yes to this, it ends discussion.
Yes.
And then there's another vote to vote on the motion.
The vote for the motion that's on the table.
And I vote no because I had one question that still has not been responded to that has to do with the parcel on the far right as to whether or not that actually has sewer.
And all due respect, Councilmember Bailey, let's follow. So, again, you need a vote again. All in favor, please say aye with your hands.
All right.
Do you oppose?
You understand this question, correct?
So, the question's been called, so now it needs to be a vote on the main motion for the council.
Okay. All those in favor?
Can we reaffirm the motion that's before this council?
The motion that is before the council is to approve the Judge Fletcher sewer map, but where it indicates no, all are yes.
Which is basically the original Fulton County map.
Correct.
Can you clarify that?
And it's four beyond what the judge is recommending, correct?
It's four, yes.
Yes, four more.
Basically, clarify, this is the map that Fulton County came back and said is the previous sewered areas.
And it's four more than what the judge has asked us to consider.
Okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any others opposed?
Four to three.
Four to three, that's. Moving on to mayor and council reports. And I do want to reiterate my comment. I know there are some in the audience that may not agree, but I'm certainly willing to meet with anybody that would to discuss this and the map, so. Do you have any council reports tonight? Okay. Move on to staff reports, beginning with our city manager.
Mayor and council, we've got a couple of published staff reports tonight, so we're going to let those go first and then we'll follow back up if there's any at the end. These are both by Cindy.
Good evening, Mayor and council. I'll start with the update on the Crab Apple Community House and property. This property, just for clarification, is located directly across the street from the Alpharetta Municipal Complex along Broadwell Road. As you know, an evaluation of the Crab Apple Community House and property was done as part of the assessment plan completed by EDAW in the fall of 2009. Many limitations were identified and ideas were proposed for future use of this property. Since beginning my work with the city of Milton, I've read the assessment plan evaluation and suggestions, visited the site several times and agree with most of the findings included in the assessment plan. The issues identified for consideration were the proposed road across the south side of the property, the building's poor condition, which would require roughly $60,000 to $70,000 to address all the concerns, limited insufficient parking on site. It is located in a high-traffic area. There is no ADA parking available on site. The size of property was also a consideration. It is roughly about half of an acre. The building itself is too small for most needed uses. It is roughly 1,000 square feet with a limiting floor plan and it is not currently ADA accessible. Based on these issues for consideration, several ideas were recommended as part of the assessment plan as well as they were discussed as part of the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board meeting a couple of months ago. The assessment itself did not recommend renovation as an option for this property. They did recommend four options. One was to demolish the building and rebuild a new structure. Even in doing this recommendation, it would not eliminate, eliminate the majority of issues with the property itself. The second recommendation was to demolish the building and create a passive park space. This space could be used for farmers markets, special events, picnics, could become a scenic attraction, view along Crab Apple, along Broadwell, could be used for historical memorial tribute or an outdoor art display. The third option would be to demolish the building and use the property for overfolk parking if, in fact, it may not even be. parking, if, in fact, it may not even be a consideration, but again, was recommended as part of the assessment plan, to demolish the building and use for overflow parking if Milton were to purchase the Alpharetta Municipal Complex in the future. And the fourth option was to sell the property and invest the money in other projects. As most of you are aware, this property does have a reversionary clause associated with it, so we would not be able to sell the property in that manner. The recommendation from the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board is to demolish the building and create a nice passive park there that will add to the feel of the Crab Apple area. Staff also agrees with this recommendation. The estimated cost of the building demolition would be less than $10,000. Improvements on the property, including a site master plan, engineering documents, sidewalk connections, street scape requirements, landscaping, signage, et cetera, have not been formally calculated yet. A rough ballpark estimate would be $30,000 on the low end, up to $60,000 on the high end, depending on the specifics determined for the project. For this particular project, community donations or some sort of assistance could be applied to the creation of this park. A timeframe for this project, should the project be recommended to move forward, is important due to the events planned there for the weekend of October 2nd and for the Christmas event on December 4th. And I'm happy to address any questions or concerns.
Are you saying that if we approve what it is that you're recommending, Parks and Recreation Board recommended, that it could be done, finished by October? Or are you saying that, what are you saying? Because you said with upcoming events.
Right. I just want to make everyone aware that if we were to move forward, we may have some limitations on timeframe. If I didn't feel entirely comfortable that we could complete the demolition and have some established landscaping and control of the parcel itself before that October 2nd weekend, I may recommend delay until after those events are completed. I feel like, at this point, we, we might be able to get it done. So if we go ahead and move forward with the next steps involved.
Okay, what, what, if any, direction from the council?
No other words necessary. We probably just in sequence want to give you these two updates tonight, just so you can kind of hear on these two community houses. What has come out of the assessment, what the Parks and Rec Advisory Board's recommendation is, because that's very important, that the citizen board has provided input on both of these recommendations. I don't know that we need an answer for it from you tonight. We will formulate how we bring it forward and get your approval to do something. Just wanted you to start thinking about it.
Okay.
Okay, I'm ready to move on.
We're not gonna have questions?
Oh, absolutely, yeah, yeah. This is a different question.
Yes, thank, thank you, mayor. I heard $30,000 to $60,000 for possible demolition. Can you just, can I?
Ten.
Ten thousand, under 10,000.
Okay, thank you, that makes me feel better. The 30, the 30 to 60, what was the 30 to 60 for renovation?
Oh, my God, 30.
Well, and I was having, there was some noise up here, and I was having trouble here.
I apologize. The estimate for the demolition of the building itself would be just under $10,000.
Under 10, thank you.
Yes.
And if you would clarify the 30 to 60,000?
Yes, because we do not have a formal master plan for the parcel, I'm estimating what uses we could do, what landscaping improvements, what street scape requirements we may have with addition of sidewalk and such, which would be on a bare minimum scale, I think an investment of roughly $30,000 in addition to the demolition cost, up to, depending on how formal we go with the property, and if we go ahead and really invest some work into it, up to about $60,000.
Okay, so the 40 to 60, including demolition?
Yes.
And then how did that range, Cindy, compare to earlier estimates of kind of minimal enhancement to the building?
Yeah, the assessment plan and the evaluation we've had of the property in the past by Northwood Restoration, it's been, I guess, about a year and a half since they gave us an estimate, was in the 60,000 to 70,000 range to address all of the ADA issues, on-site issues, the age of the building, bringing electrical up to code, everything. The building itself was built in the early 50s.
Right.
So it would need to have a lot of rehab to.
So the 60 to 70, because again, about the same, I mean, about $60,000 to create a passive park and demolish the building, and/or about 60, if we were to bring it up to code, to then be able to utilize it for community.
Yeah, if, if we were to spend the 60 for the passive park, that would be on the upper end. That would be really trying to do.
Right, I'm just trying to make sure I'm understanding the cost.
The $60,000 for the renovation, again, would be to bring everything into compliance. Even if we were to renovate the building and have it available, we're still looking at the same limitations that we're facing now with the on-site parking, accessibility, the location, the high-traffic area and such.
And I sure understand and appreciate the recommendation, and my question doesn't indicate that I don't support that recommendation, it's just, I do know that over the course of time, over the last year or so, some of the comments and input that we've gotten had to do with the reversion clause, and in fact, I know that there are some scouts out there, there are some different community groups that had hoped that they would be able to utilize that as a community building for meetings, for different sorts of potential environmental education, or just education having to do with young people, arts and crafts. I know that we don't have a quote-unquote kind of replacement venue for that. Was that part of the consideration from your department as you looked at making this recommendation?
Yes, we, we have gotten some comments from a few groups that have used the building, I guess, historically in the past, needing a space such as that. I'm hoping that the next update that I give will allow the Bethwell Center to fulfill that need in the area.
And again, the point of my question with that is to make sure that we're giving consideration to those that view the building as having value for their purposes and for that component of the community. Obviously, passive parks also provide opportunities for our citizens, they're just kind of different opportunities. The other question I had, again, I think that's gonna get addressed probably with this second item that you'll be providing us an update on. Finally, will the Design Review Board have an opportunity to weigh in on this structure as well as the other, given that it would, it would meet the definition of a historic structure?
Would that be required to be in the, Cindy?
We will put ourselves through the same process that we would require of anybody to go through demolition.
And especially if it would be a demolition of what would be deemed by some as a historic structure, according to the DNR.
Yeah. I don't know if it has been classified as a historic structure.
I don't know, I just know that based on some of that criteria, and given that we've got a historic preservation ordinance that's proceeding, I appreciate the city manager's point that we'd want to go through the same processes we would expect some.
Also, maybe somebody left to save the building.
Right, thank you, mayor.
Would refresh my memory, who's the party to whom the property would be reverted to?
Goes back to, is Fulton, the succession on that one is Fulton County, and prior to that's Fulton County Board of Education. So.
We'll know on the, on the, on the deed that had the reverter, if it reverted, it reverted back to the heirs of the grantor.
Which, okay, you're talking the wrong property.
Yeah.
Because Crab Apple one is Fulton County and Fulton County Board of Education prior to that.
I don't think it has a reverter, the other one.
I guess which brings up a question, if in fact it is Fulton County, would that piece of property fall under the same agreement we had back in 2006, where we bought the parks and the firehouses for, what was it, $2 an acre or something?
Wasn't quite that cheap, 100's cheap.
That's right. Must have been about Birmingham Park. And further, what is the acreage of it? Is it not less than one acre?
It is, yes, it's about .6.
$60. Could we, could we check into that? To see if it would revert to Fulton County?
So we're talking about, I'm sorry, I'm speaking out of turn. So we're talking about .6 acre pocket park. Have we, in your experience, how successful with a .6 acre pocket park they hit that location?
It depends. It really depends on what the goals of the property are. You know, I know that we already utilized the property for special events in the area. You know, the limitations that are on the property right now are gonna limit the city's investment into the property. Because there's limited parking, because there's the size of the building, it's gonna be limited use. I don't know that the city would get its full investment back in a reasonable amount of time. Basically, we'd be investing in something we already know we have substantial limitations.
I mean, the pocket park?
The pocket park itself, again, it's more of the Crab Apple area needing green space, needing a focal point, needing a, kind of a central gathering point, again, to service the special events that we already have. We've had several needs for farmers' markets, we've had recommendations that we, the city get involved in an outdoor art display type program. There's a lot of options to do it, to make it a, more of a scenic attraction or view in the Crab Apple area. Not so much for us to make money back on it, I guess you would say.
Well, that was kind of my intent. If we could buy it for $60, flip it, put it, put it out on the market, give it up.
We'll, we'll explore it. I understand, I understand. How, how big, again, did you say the building was? I'm sorry, I know you said it.
The building is roughly 1,000 square feet.
Julie, you have another question?
Yes, I'm just, Mrs. Panacci, Cindy. As you're looking at this, I would be interested if there's gonna be some more research from your end. It's just, what sort of rental would that afford for those that would want to use it for a community location, as we continue to consider those various options? To your point, if it's a passive park, we lose that opportunity to, one, provide a facility, if you will. And again, I understand both perspectives, I mean, I hear from, you know, both, both of those groups, some that would like to see it as a parkland versus the other. And one thing I hadn't heard, and this is a question that just comes to mind, is that when you mentioned that by demolishing the building, it would help with the special events, and for those businesses that need to use the word business, but how much of this is being driven because we think that there's a need for a pocket park for citizens to use versus creating additional space there for other purposes, or is it specifically citizen-driven?
The use, the use that we have looked at, we've taken citizen comments on it, we've really tried to focus on the city's investment long-term.
Okay.
And what the area needs, and how the building can be used over time, and how the property can be used over time. Obviously, if the property doesn't revert, and the city doesn't have to worry about that, there would be an opportunity to either sell the property, you know, it was my understanding that that might not be an option, so we didn't really explore that option very much.
And my final point, mayor, and thank you for your indulgence, is that you mentioned about parking, and I go back, not into the too distant past, where we, there was some discussion about shared parking, and whether it's a passive park or a building, and if we have citizens wanting to come, while we'd love to think that everybody's gonna walk to a passive park, they're not going to. So if there were limitations to the building on parking, similarly, there would be limitations for a passive park. So I think we need to be cautious that we don't presume that you wouldn't have a parking issue with one use versus the other. And again, while I understand that some of the businesses there might be concerned about parking, because it would be, it's a city-owned location, it's still a city-owned location, and we didn't give up any rights when we offered some additional modification to those parcels, and in fact, that was one of the key points that we all discussed, because it was not yet decided what would happen with that parcel. So I just want to make sure that everybody's kind of on the same page, that we've not given away our rights for some shared parking, and for the opportunity for the city and our citizens to be able to park there, whether it's a passive park or a community structure. Thank you.
Any more questions on this one? Okay, can we move to Bethwell?
Okay, this is an update regarding the Bethwell Community House and property. This property is located at 2695 Hopewell Road, very near the intersection of Cogburn, Hopewell, and Francis. As well, this evaluation was part of the assessment plan done by EDAW in the fall of 2009. There were limitations identified with this property as well. I've read the assessment plan again, visited the site numerous times with staff and other professionals. I do feel that this building does have potential, more than that of the Crab Apple building. The issues referenced for consideration is the traffic in the area. Entrance and exits should be established with best sightline to Cogburn-Hopewell intersection. The building is in poor condition, however, the roof was already replaced last year. The property is small, roughly .7, .8 acres, and only specific uses should be identified for the property. The building is small, but has an open floor plan, which is different than that of the Crab Apple building, it is roughly 1,300 square feet, and can accommodate a variety of uses.
1,300?
1,300. The location is more centrally located for use, being closer to the midpoint of the city, but is not very visible. It is currently not ADA accessible, and there are some parking limitations based on the placement of the parking and the number due to the nature of the property. The ideas discussed were first, you know, let, to let the property revert back, which it could, to the donor heirs. Obviously, last year, the city felt a need to try to avoid that happening by going ahead and replacing the roof as part of the initial stages of the renovation. Two is to demolish the building and replace it with an open-air pavilion and playground. Due to this reversionary clause, I believe we're limited, based on the use of the property, relating to the structure itself. So we would need to maintain the structure. The third option was to renovate the building and property for use. Identified uses of the property would be rentals, birthday parties, reunions, meetings, programs, recreation classes, art, dance, karate, for example, instructional classes, second language classes, study prep, summer day camp, daily camp for ages 6 to 12, could accommodate roughly 30 to 35 kids. Also for community events, farmers' market, parent-child dances. The other recommendation also, in addition, is to add a small playground at the back rear that would be available for anytime use by the public. The Parks and Recreation Advisory Board recommended proceeding with a renovation plan once the potential for purchasing additional property, adjacent property was explored. I agreed with their recommendation. I did meet with the adjacent property owners to collect their concerns and suggestions if the city did move forward with a renovation. Their main concern was privacy and any excessive noise that would be associated with the facility being used. We discussed how these concerns would be addressed. I also asked them about the large field that runs behind the Bethwell Community House. I asked if they had ever been approached about selling that area, either to Fulton County or to the City of Milton, they said they had not. I inquired as to whether they would be interested in selling just that area to the City of Milton for expansion of the property, and that would eliminate many of the current property limitations. They did not have an interest in selling a portion of their property at this time, they were in favor, however, of the renovation. Since I have followed up regarding the purchase of the adjacent property at this time, and that is not an option, I would like direction regarding moving forward with the renovation plan. I have received a revised estimate for building renovation that was recently completed this past month of $60,000 to $70,000. A site plan, engineering documents for the building renovation, and site improvements would be additional. Because of the nature of the property currently, variance would be needed for parking and the addition of a corner-to-corner porch on the front of the building. The building already exists inside the 50-foot setbacks, and that footprint would be extended to the rear slightly to make the restrooms ADA accessible, and access would be from the interior of the building rather than the exterior. Rough ballpark estimate for the entire project would be approximately $120,000 to $150,000. I do see potential for this property, I believe, once renovated, it would get a lot of use for a variety of programs, rental, and community events. Currently, we have no rental or program space available. Since I began working with the city in January, I've received 15 to 20 inquiries for rental space for various events. I see the value moving forward, the official design and site plan to get this property open to the public as soon as possible. The investment cost into this property should be regained in a manner of three to five years. And I'm happy to address any of your questions.
Any questions? Bill?
Yeah, Cindy, so you said you're looking for direction. You're just trying to figure out, you know, which way you should go, that kind of thing, so.
Yeah, the next steps are gonna require some money, so I don't want to continue to go along a path that, that I don't think that you all agree with. If it's not some, a direction you want me to go, then I, I don't want to go there.
Yeah, well, there's special considerations with regards to this particular piece of property and with regards to the structure itself, so I mean, I would be in favor if the city is interested in, you know, obviously keeping hold of it, then we need to come up with some kind of plan that shows how it would be renovated, how we would come into, you know, you, you know, what would $120,000 or whatever the budget is actually do to the property, and how could we use it? It's interesting to know that you get inquiries all the time about, you know, wanting to, you know, use space or rent out space, and we don't have anything to offer our citizens, so I'd be in favor of somehow making that happen, but.
Bill?
You mentioned the property to, I guess that's the west, the short. You mentioned the property to, I guess that's the west, the Schosses property, the open field. Behind the.
I guess it's west.
Behind this property.
It's actually, I don't know, am I okay to state the property owner's name? It's Mr. and Mrs. Rushton?
Rushton.
Rushton.
If we looked at the property between the Bethwell House and where Hopewell turns, they're up to the intersection, it seems to be about a hundred and fifty to two hundred feet on that side of the building.
I did look at the property, I did not approach the property owner. That, that whole area is heavily wooded. It would require a lot of clearing to be able to add to the property space. I, in turn, approached the property owner that had a cleared, open field behind the property that would immediately be ready for any kind of addition. But I thought about it, but looking at the nature of that property, it is heavily, heavily wooded and would require a lot of clearing and I just didn't know if that was a direction that we should go in at this time.
Refresh me again on the reversion article in that agreement.
It's my understanding, and Ken, correct me, it's my understanding that this property would revert a little easier and that the limitations on the property is not just use, but it's the structure itself. So if we were to try to demolish this structure, it would be in conflict with the reversion.
That's correct, and in fact, if we looked at it the first time, you may recall, we got a letter from the, from the would-be receiver who were all ready to take it back if we were done with it. Councilmember Lusk, I will say, if you don't mind me going back to the Crab Apple, I pulled up real quick the title work on the Crab Apple piece, and there's not a reverter on that one. That simply says that the property has to be used, it's needed to Fulton County for four H Club, Boy Scout, Home Demonstration Club and other agricultural purposes of interest in the community. That, there's no reversion, but so, so the relief would be of action and damages or something. That would be the sort of relief that the heirs could bring, so Chris and I were talking. If we were to sell it, the only way we'd be able to sell it and feel comfortable that that sort of broad grant was met would be if we put some sort of a restrictive covenant on it, that it could only be used for those purposes. But if so facto, if we do that, who's going to, who's going to buy it, is the concern.
Might be worth approaching local property owners.
If you're looking for direction, I will tell you that I would be in favor of us going ahead and renovating the building and getting it so that it could be used, because I do believe that there is a real strong need in the community. It's a facility that is enough larger than the Crab Apple one, that it really could be used for something and I believe that it would, we would not have trouble getting people to rent it out. So I would be in favor of us going ahead and doing something with it.
Yeah, I agree, we need those opportunities and especially given that reversion clause, it would be, I think, irresponsible for us to do anything other than to ensure that that continues to be available to our citizens. A question for you, and maybe not for this evening, but as you continue to evaluate both of these properties, thinking about a cost of renovation of one twenty to one hundred and fifty with a payback period of three to five years and given those fifteen to twenty inquiries for rental space and given that this rental space is only three hundred square feet larger than the one in Crab Apple, it does beg the question, I think, to at least go back and make sure that we haven't presumed that we don't potentially need that space as well. I'm not saying that we don't need green space in Crab Apple, we do. And the master plan in Crab Apple said that we should be requiring those that build there to also have green space and we haven't really done that, we need to. I just don't know that we've fully evaluated it. If on the one hand we say that that need exists, I'm concerned we might be ignoring that need in Crab Apple as well and that the difference between those buildings, I think I heard was a thousand square feet and thirteen hundred, I don't think that that is distinguishable, especially when some of those interior walls, if the issue's just open, you could take down a wall if it's not a barrier wall. So it just, again, hopefully that'll be some additional consideration that you have. Again, I fully support passive green space in Crab Apple, but given that you mentioned those additional things with Bethel, it makes me wonder if we've really evaluated that to its fullest extent in Crab Apple as well. Because I think those needs do exist and people want them. A final thought on the AG one, on the Crab Apple parcel, and I think that that's where you've got citizens that have this expectation that that will continue to be available for four H or for Girl Scouts or for Boy Scouts, is that they were familiar with that language back when it was owned by Fulton County. So if we were to look at demolishing that building and having a passive park, I just think we need to be certain that we're still considering those sorts of opportunities.
Comply with the deed restrictions.
That would be correct, and that it doesn't simply become additional space either for, not that we don't want to give space to the businesses, but it needs to, for citizen purposes, meet the requirement under Fulton County, which was to provide access to things that were specifically four H and Girl Scouts and Boy Scouts and therefore it shouldn't be just an opportunity to expand our convenience when we have special events. I just want to make sure that we don't do anything that would legally be in contrast with what we need to be doing.
Yes, Mayor.
No, I didn't weigh in on giving you a direction, but I have a difficult time appropriating that amount of money to improve a thirteen hundred square foot structure when you could essentially tear it down and build a new one of probably greater size, plus the restrictions on parking that are involved there, access and egress off of the road, I think it's going to eat up a lot of your available space. So I would, I would go along with this proposal if we had the opportunity to either purchase or lease additional property adjacent to that structure.
You're referring to the Bethwell property?
Bethwell, yes.
Yeah, the reversionary clause will not allow us to tear down that structure.
It's not an option.
That's the point that I'm trying to make.
But if.
I find that I have a difficult time dumping that amount of money into a structure like that.
And, and some of that money is structural, but also we have to add some parking. We're going to have to do some site improvements to add a playground, you know, that's a cost, to engineer it. You know, all of that's part of that, that large cost estimate that I gave you, all of that's incorporated into that.
So to add a playground and the required number of parking spaces there, I think we're going to run out of available property in a hurry, aren't we now?
It's a small, it's a small parcel.
About thirty thousand square feet.
Alan, would you?
To Councilmember Lusk's point, and I, I'm not saying I'm in favor of this, but I just want to ask a question regarding it. Are we sure that the property owner would not allow us to tear down the building and build a better, bigger, newer structure if it's for the same uses?
Counselor, excuse me, Counselor.
We have sentimental, we have sentimental thinking or something on that.
We haven't reached out and asked them about that question, quite frankly, and if this begins to germinate more and we may do that and see if we can get some kind of an agreement where that would be deemed not to be a reach of the deed.
And I'm not saying I'm necessarily in favor of that, it would just be good to have all of our options on the table when we, because, you know, as Bill pointed out, we're talking about a hundred and twenty to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, it's a lot of money.
And if I may, Mayor, just as a point of clarity, it seemed that when we had this discussion before that the reason that we were even discussing spending any dollars in that building was of the reversion clause and that the collective belief at that time at least was that it was too important as a potential pocket park to allow it to simply revert, not sell it, but to allow it to revert and not to maintain ownership. And so our hands were tied, as I understood it legally. That doesn't mean that we shouldn't ask the question, because now we're committed to either keeping it or not, but if we're going to keep it, would we then have that option of
Right.
replacing it with a different structure? At least the, the direction we had been given before was that it was highly unlikely, even though that express question hadn't been asked, that there did not, there was not a propensity for that family to say, sure, go ahead, do what you want and we're not going to take it back. The propensity at the time at least was that they wanted to reclaim the property if we did anything, which is why we spent money on the roof.
That's right, yeah.
If memory serves me.
And I would respectfully disagree about, you know, tearing it down and building something new. I think, I mean, obviously it costs a lot of money to do anything, but it may be reasonable if you're adding parking and adding other structures and whatnot, but I think it kind of fits in with, you know, what I think the vision is of Milton is to keep some, you know, whether you want to call it historic or not, but an old structure like that and redo it, so I just respectfully disagree.
Your estimate of a hundred and twenty thousand, did that take into consideration putting in a new septic field? Or does, or did you anticipate extending sewer up there?
I think we should extend sewer.
No, seriously though.
They want it, I'm not giving it to them.
Seriously though, a new septic field, given the use there, which would determine the size of the field and the reserve field that would be required for it, is going to double up a bunch of that thirty thousand square feet.
Yeah, we have not evaluated the onsite septic at this time.
And just to be clear, I was being facetious, obviously. Just in case Mr. Long. I'm thinking that Mr. Longoria might have thought that I really meant that we should extend it. I wanted to clarify for the record so there was no confusion.
And you, you've got some comments and maybe
Joel.
Some different directions and, you know, kind of put, staff can put their heads together if we need to come back with it in the work session, discuss these items first. Okay, the next item on our agenda is to go into executive session to discuss land acquisition and actual litigation. Do I have a motion or a second?
Eric, tonight we just need land acquisition.
Do we need an update on some potential litigation that I got some more information on?
I don't have anything to report.
Okay.
Yes, Mayor, I move to adjourn to executive session to discuss land acquisition.
A second motion.
Motion, Councilmember Lusk, a second. All in favor, please say aye.